Thank you for coming tonight. We're having a forum, as you know, as you're here. The forum tonight is addressing very specifically Delridge-related issues. A bunch of... and the Delridge District, in case you're not familiar with it, is the eastern half of the West Seattle Peninsula. Thirty-Fifth all the way to Duwamish, bordered on the north end by Harbor Island, and on the south end by White Center. So, all of that landmass incorporates the Delridge Neighborhoods District. The district got together, the district council got together in cooperation with a number of other activists from inside the district some years ago and had a summit. And the result of that summit was determining a number of items that were very specifically Delridge-focused. We did this because we wanted to have a list of items that we could work from, there were specific topics to address when we were working with our other partners. Whether they were community advocates, whether they were neighborhood organizations, whether they were elected officials, or whether they were other city departments. It would be something for us to hang on to and discuss. When we were talking about having a candidates forum, we decided that the best way for us to go forward would be to use those topics. And let each of the candidates, one of these people will be our next, well, we're missing two folks tonight. So statistically likely that one of these people will be our next elected District One City Council member. And that opportunity for us to have a forum which addressed very specifically those Delridge items was very rich, too rich for us to pass up. So, that's the format that we chose. How we're gonna do it is those topics, candidates have each drawn one, they'll address the topic that they drew, they'll have five minutes to do so. After we've gone through all of that, then there'll be another round, where they'll have two more minutes to talk about another topic of their choice, and they'll go through that. Lastly, the third round, they'll be able to speak about really anything they want. It's free exposition for the third round, so that should be exciting. The nice part, or the fun part, the exciting part, is that you'll each have a clicker. And Carrie's gonna talk to you about what that clicker, do you have clickers? Some of you have clickers, do you all have clickers?
Everybody already does.
So, you have a clicker. Yes. You'll be using that clicker throughout these presentations. After each candidate has spoken, then we'll say, "All right, now it's time to..." I don't think we're allowed to say "vote," but "select your option." We'll say "select your option." And you'll get to press that button, and that will come up on screen. So, it will be real-time feedback on how you guys felt about what they had to say. I'm gonna let Carrie come up and talk a little bit, I'm gonna let David come up and talk a little bit about Youngstown Cultural Arts Center. He's a gracious host this evening, David.
Thanks, Matt. I don't know how to use the clicker, so that's good that I'm talking about Youngstown. And tonight, I'm announcing my candidacy, no. Just kidding. I just wanna say welcome to Youngstown, and we're super excited to have all of you here. Welcome to all of you, probably for the second, or third, or fifth, or 10th time, maybe for the first time, and to all of you the same. We're proud to be West Seattle leader of arts and cultural activities, and also a big proponent and actor in civic engagement. So, that's what we're doing here tonight, and we do all kinds of events here and stuff. If you wanna know more, there's a mailing list, sign up, and some stickers of ours, and rental sheets and stuff outside. I'm not gonna take too much of your time, but we're just really honored and happy to be part of the civic dialogue and really pushing things forward here in Delridge. Youngstown is run by the Delridge Neighborhoods Development Association, and we're active in a lot of different arenas in trying to make this a better community. So, welcome.
Thank you. And now, we're gonna learn how to use the clicker.
All right, clicker time. So, this is an audience response system that was purchased by the Seattle Department Neighborhoods. We use it mostly for anything that's a city event. The Delridge District Council is an extension of the city, so we're happy to be able to use it today. How many have seen our audience responses before we used it? Okay, a few people. So, how many of you have "Watch and Wants to be Millionaire"? Right, so it's poll of the audience. So, it's basically the same kind of technology, where you'll be asked a question, and you will have an opportunity to pick A through D in this particular case. Let me move through my instructions then. So, for example, if we were to ask you, "What is your favorite animal?", you would pick A, B, C, or D. To course, I'll answer for that. Do not give us the finger, as we say at the Seattle Channel. I run this for the Seattle Channel in the live show, and Brian always says, "Do not give us the finger. If you give us the finger, the building will implode." No, if you hit the finger, the hand raises button, your vote's not gonna be tallied. If you hit E or F today, it's not gonna be tallied as well. So, we really want to be able to, we're gonna have fun with it. The options are pretty fun, we see them a little bit later, but they range from "Did the candidate hear the question?", to "Delridge" all the way. So, it's not supposed to be a serious thing, but it is kind of a way to get instant feedback to you and to the candidates as to what people are thinking about their responses and if it's appropriate for Delridge. So, any questions about the audience responses? Go ahead.
Are these guys familiar with it and use it as well?
Oh, they don't get to use it, so. I don't, I don't.
Yes.
I'm not familiar with it, and they have not used it before, except for maybe Chaz Redmond. Is that correct? Have you used them?
I have used them.
Yes. Any other questions? Yes.
Are there gonna be any questions for the candidates from the audience?
Not during tonight's presentation, but...
Can you repeat questions of those from here? So, the question was, is there gonna be any questions from the audience to the candidates tonight?
Not tonight. The way we structured the forum, it didn't allow time for that. However, I have a fairly good belief that the candidates will stick around to hear your questions, so. Is there any other question? Okay.
Okay. Let's ask them to go.
All right. Before we begin, one last thing, I wanna tell you a couple things about this room that we're in. First of all, restrooms are out that door and to your right. If, for some unfortunate reason, we have to all leave this room very suddenly, exits are the way you came in, through this area back here. Alternatively, you could climb out the window, but I would say that's an exit of the rest of the room. I think that's about it, as far as preamble goes. If there are no other questions, we'll go ahead and begin. All right. Did I? I did. Okay, yes.
You did.
I was just wondering if I had made sure to explain to everyone how I'm gonna answer your questions. Yes, yes, I did. All right. Chaz Redmond is our first speaker.
Yeah, please be gentle with me on that clicker. My question was, how would I, as a council member, strengthen the trust relationship with local government and its many layers and agencies with the Delridge community? And there are multiple departments of government that have trust issues. Seattle Police Department, the Department of Planning and Development, Department of Transportation, Parks and Recreation, City Light, SPDU, and least of all, if you will, Department of Neighborhoods. Each of them, I think, would take a different approach. I think SPDU is working right now to strengthen that relationship by having community policing plans and working with folks in different neighborhoods. I think Jeff Page in South Park is such a good example of how to energize the community to identify issues associated with policing. And that would be, I think, a really good approach here in Delridge. We have a number of venues where we could sit down with the residents and the business community and find out what the issues are with SPDU. With DPD, Department of Planning and Development, those issues go a little deeper. The director has relatively, some relative discretion on what she can do, and the interpretation of the law itself is being reexamined at the moment. What I think I would like to see for DPD is I would like to have the Delridge Visioning Project and a number of other things associated with growing business here in Delridge, both along Delridge itself, in the Office Park up here, and down along the Duwamish. I'd like to have that conversation with DPD to build business and look at different ways that we could put housing and transportation together and coordinate things. And with DPD, we would have that conversation in concert with SDOT, because SDOT, as we know here on the Delridge side, has multiple people working on multiple components of Delridge Way, not all of which have been coordinated. Clearly, the entire length of Delridge needs to be coordinated from the transportation perspective and from the planning perspective. Parks, we have a really good relationship, I think, here in Delridge with parks, mostly through the adjacent community center. Parks itself has some issues associated with recreation and natural space. We have a lot of natural space. In fact, I believe Delridge is probably the district with the most, basically, wild space, if you will. And we want to keep that. And there are current issues right now. Parks is working on a proposal to put a bike trail in the cheasty green space, and I was involved with those discussions for the last couple of years, and there are two sides to that. One side is happy, and one side is not happy. And that expresses, to me, the differences between the two sides of parks. So, trusting parks is going to take a little more time and effort, I think, because parks themselves, I don't think, has a full understanding of what their mission is. In my mind, there are two parks. There's the recreation component of park, and then there is the actual natural space and the park aspect. And I'm not sure that parks understands that they really should be kept a little bit separate. With SPDU and City Light, we all are paying for the infrastructure which is being built for City Light, for Seattle Public Utilities, and we are paying a very fair price for that. I believe we have the most expensive water system in the country. Our electric rates are very, very low, but at the same time, there are people who are in distress who can't afford either. And we know that the city's reduction for utility bills doesn't reach a lot of people. So, I would like to have a conversation with those two departments separately on ways that we could lower the cost overall for those in distress and work a little better on the long-range plan. I mean, I use a lot of electricity, I know exactly how much electricity costs, and when I pass that point... The other issue with SPDU is there are a lot of people who water who don't drain, and so we're being charged for drainage. And finally, the Department of Neighborhoods. That's really the glue that has held our city together, and I would love to work with DON and the new director, Kathy Nyholm, and build out a different model where we go a little bit back in time so that the Neighborhood District Coordinators can actually be advocates within the community and work with businesses and residents to move things forward. I know that's been off their plate for a while, and they're a little bit understaffed, but I would really like to see DON return to the era when they were actually advocating for us and working with us partners who literally locked step together. And I think that could be done. All of these departments have really good people. I've never met somebody who worked at a department who was not a quality human being or did not have really good insight. They're under the gun in a lot of ways, and directors' rulings always stop them.
Thank you, Chaz. Perfect. Now comes the exciting part. And select. So, using your button pads. What did you think?
Seconds. All right. You guys are very... There you go.
All right, so, what I didn't explain was which bar is which. On the far right, we have "I Love It." On the far left, we have "I Did Not Love It So Much." There's one in the middle that kind of splits them out.
So, A, did the candidate hear the question? B, typical politician. C, I guess that'll work. Or D, Delridge all the way.
So, in this case... All right.
By your standard, I view that as positive.
You're in the, what, seventy-fifth percentile?
There you go.
Oh, I'm wondering, I want to... Okay. All right. Good, Chaz? Well done. Carl?
Yes, I got number two, which was "Create and promote a Delridge neighborhood and community identity." I'm really excited I got this one. I actually was excited about all of them today, because my wife and I live here in Delridge, just a few blocks away. We bought our first house together on Twenty-First, and we absolutely love this community, and we are so invested in helping the neighborhood and community really come together and do exactly this. This street, when I think of the whole corridor, but also Delridge Way as the primary arterial, this is where, this is where we walk, where we shop, where we commute, where we bicycle, where we run. And it's a long stretch, and every day when I go down this route on my way to work, whether you're coming off of West Seattle Bridge from down by Skylark, all the way south through to White Center, there's a really long stretch, and very little bit of it actually really stands out to you as one cohesive community. And there are lots of little ways that we can do that, that we can help build what I would consider a very vibrant core to this whole big corridor. And I think that a lot of that starts with creating a, our own little mini-junction neighborhood. A lot of people would have a different idea about where that goes, but I think we have a natural spot that's slowly coalescing around the intersection with Brandon in Delridge, where we have the Delridge Grocery Co-op, which is slowly coming together, which is gonna be awesome. You know, within a couple blocks from there, we have, you can get great fuck, there's pizza, you have the beginnings of a neighborhood core. And when you think about, when you drive through or walk through neighborhoods around the city, some of the things they have is a couple blocks, and you have concentrated retail establishments, restaurants, a bar, and all these other things. They also often have little flags up on the posts, so when you come through, you know you're entering Delridge. You know you're entering a diverse, incredibly diverse community that has great pride in all the people who live here. We like living here. We should show that to everyone coming through. I was at the Delridge Projects Workshop a couple weeks ago, and some of the numbers that jumped out at me were, I think the number was, you know, nineteen thousand-plus vehicles travel that, this quarter on a weekday. And that's thousands of cars and trucks, all going up and down, and what are, what is our identity to them as they're passing? What are we giving them to flag them, to slow them down, to make them wanna come back here and shop, make them wanna come back here, spend more time, make them wanna come back here and settle and become one of our neighbors? To me, I think those are just really exciting opportunities for how you build a community. A huge part of that involves a lot of streetscaping along Delridge. If you've walked on the sidewalks, particularly the eastern sidewalk heading south from West Seattle Bridge, and it's wildly overgrown, you're basically tiptoeing over brambles and on a very narrow strip, and then as you come in to some of the more populated areas, there's just a tremendous opportunity to broaden sidewalks, brighten the area. You have flags, flowers, people will come in, they will feel the pulse of the community, they will feel all these great ideas and people. And most importantly, we will be able to have a place where we can gather, where we can mix with ourselves, not just visitors. This is also very much about getting us out together, eating at the same restaurants, having a beer together after work, just walking around, going grocery shopping. There's so much community you build simply by being able to say hi to the same people. If you have the same routine, you stop at the store and you wait home from work, being able to come in, wave, recognize faces. I think these are, you know, a whole, a whole series of steps we can do, and we can build a Delridge neighborhood that is strongest at its most diverse, and is also most united around loving where we live here.
All right, thank you. Now, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm sleeping.
Here it comes. All right, here we go. And select. Tally. A broader response. All right. Good times. All right. Jody, are you ready?
Absolutely.
Here we go.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming to see us today. I really appreciate it. Been a longtime fixture in West Seattle. It's nice to be down there at the Youngstown Center. The question that I have is number three, develop business associations to spur economic development. I think where I would start is bringing economic development broadly to the Delridge community. Having lived in West Seattle since 1977, there's been a lot of change in our community throughout. If you start up on California Avenue, say you drove down California Avenue twenty, twenty years ago, you drove down California Avenue today. Vast improvements, a lot different than it used to look. Some people would say, maybe a little bit overbuilt, but dramatically different, lots of economic development there. You move a little farther east, Fort Leroy, similar story. Lot of new buildings, lot of economic development there, there's thriving communities up and down that street. Move a little bit farther east, Thirty-Fifth Avenue, still kind of sketchy, but they're starting to build a little bit. And finally, you make your way to Delridge, and it seems like hasn't been as much concentration of development in this neck of the woods. I actually look at that as a positive. I think that when you look at the West Seattle Junction, for an example, a lot of folks that I've been talking to in the community feel that that area of the town has been overdeveloped, overbuilt, without input from the community in the way that we would like to see it built. So, when I look at the Delridge corridor, this area specifically, I see opportunity, frankly. I think that we have a chance to look into the future, if you will, looking at the West Seattle Junction, looking at other areas of the city that have been built, the Bar District that have been built. I think we have an opportunity to really tailor-make this part of town while it's still affordable enough for people to actually live here. Some of the most affordable housing in our district is right here in this community. I look at, I look at that as a plus. You have easy ingress and egress from the city, as long as Delridge isn't too backed up. Hopefully, we can do some work on that to make it a little easier to get in and out. But you have low home prices, you have people that care about their community, folks just like you are. So, when I think about economic development and what we can do to kind of spur that in our area here, I think of building coalitions with developers, communities, community associations, neighbors, folks just like you and me. I spend a lot of time talking about partnering with developers to get more of what we want out of them when they build. And I think that one of the carrots, if you will, that we may be able to dangle in front of those developers is prime real estate in the Delridge community. I think that if we can find a way to work with those folks as opposed to putting ourselves in opposition to them. There are folks that are running for city council currently that want to make it a lot more expensive to build in West Seattle. Might be a good idea, might not be a good idea, but when you talk about adding seven figures to the price of developing projects, you tend to put yourself on the opposite side of the developers. I think that there has to be a better way for us as a community to reach out to developers and say, "Hey, we want you in our community, but let's do it in a way that benefits all of us as opposed to just your bottom line." I think that there are likely to be developers in this region that are responsive to that narrative. And I think that when we have those conversations, and we turn them on to Delridge and say, "Hey, these are the ideas that we have for the community down here," I think that we can likely, over time, get a lot of folks down here to invest in this community. I think if you look at West Seattle over time, the fact that Delridge is a little underbuilt at this point, to me, that's not a portent of the future. I think that as long as I've been in West Seattle, it's obvious that they're going to build, and they're going to build everywhere. Eventually, whether it's five years from now or fifteen years from now, Delridge will look like the rest of West Seattle. So, I think that right now is a key moment for us to jump in and make sure that when they build this area, they build it with the community in mind, and again, not just their bottom line in mind. I think that trying to work with those folks and build, trying to build coalitions with those factors, I think that that would be the best way forward to spur economic development down here by trying to partner with those folks. There's gonna be some tough conversations, there's gonna be some tough battles, frankly, because we wanna make sure, again, that we have the community that we want. I think the best way to do that is for us to all get together, take that narrative to developers, and let them know, "This is what we expect from you, this is what we want in our community, and here's how we're willing to work together to make that happen." Again, thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Jody. All right. And select.
So, A, did the candidate hear the question? B, typical politician. C, I guess that'll work. Or D, Delridge all the way.
And we're not gonna change the E's throughout the course of the evening.
I just like to finish off.
We're not gonna go back to the horses and pass them.
Be careful for what you wish.
Are all the votes in? And results. Okay.
So, it looks like the majority of you feel, "I guess that'll work."
Right, the fifth bar, the one at the far end, is things that didn't...
People who didn't respond. Great.
Lisa? Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, here we go.
All right. So, my question, first of all, thank you, everybody, for coming. This is fantastic, and it's a fun format, so thank you for the creativity as well. So, my question was, how could we together create or maximize places and events where diverse groups can come together to build trust and reciprocity? So, I think in order to build trust with our community, our community, our residents, need to have faith that their leaders are actually representing their interests. And in order for people to have faith in that, they actually need to see action and results. So, you know, I think the district system is a really good system to get us sort of nudged in that direction, particularly because I think it'll create a really fine focus for leaders to be addressing the concerns of their community, because they'll know that they'll be held accountable for addressing those concerns. So, I think that in itself will, will help lead us towards a more trusting relationship between decision-makers, policymakers, and the general public. But I also think that there are specific things that policymakers can lead in doing. So, that means addressing issues of inequality and access to opportunity, and addressing issues like police reform. As we know, from recent events in Ferguson, Baltimore, and in our own city, the, the whole nation has a lot to do yet, you know, a lot of progress to make in making sure that our diverse communities feel that they are being treated fairly, and feel that responsive policing includes, includes them, includes addressing their needs and making sure that they're not subject to racial bias. I think we're moving in the right direction here in Seattle. Our police chief has set a new tenor with what it, what it means to police in the city and what the expectation should be for policing, and the police chief has done so as well. But we have a lot, a lot of work yet to do. The city has created a community police commission. We are one of, we are actually the only city under a consent decree that has a community police commission that is leading the, the consent decree reforms and making sure that they're implemented. And they have a lot of recommendations, and actually, the city is in the process of bargaining them with the, with the police bill now. So, we have to really be actively engaged and watchdogging those reforms and make sure that they're, they're bargained into the next police contract. Creating trust so that people of, from diverse groups and diverse ethnicities, different backgrounds can come together also can mean physical places, like Youngstown. I think you really need to work to assess what the needs are of, of a community and build your institutions around them. And Youngstown has done a fantastic job of, of doing so. If you're at all familiar with the programs here, they're doing a very unique job at addressing the needs of this community, particularly, particularly its youth. Also, you have to be willing to do things differently if you wanna engage diverse communities and gain trust. City government has a tendency to really not wanna change often, and that's a problem, because progress means change. And I think, again, the district system will necessitate, necessitate change in the way that we govern. And I know one thing that, should I be so lucky to be elected, I will promote, is right now, the city council has its committee meetings downtown at City Hall twice a month. Every now and again, we have a town hall outside of the city, but I think it's really critical that it become institutionalized, that we have at least one committee meeting every month out in the community. That's what it means to do things differently, to go to where people are instead of requiring them to come to you. I also think that the district council members should have office hours in the I also think that the district council members should have office hours in the community. I don't mean like some fancy office, I mean a desk in a community center where we can meet with our constituents on a regular basis. Some of these are just a few of the strategies that I think would be really, really helpful in working to build trust.
Thank you, Lisa. All right. And A, B, C, or D? Give you a few more moments. All right, all votes in?
What's the end top option is, I guess that'll work.
Which really, given that it's the 75th percentile, is actually kind of positive. When you mean work, you mean like, work, it'll work. Okay. I'm going to pause just for one moment. I remembered the thing that I forgot. Brianna Thomas was going to be here tonight. She had accepted and was really looking forward to her come on head surgery today. And as the primary caregiver, she was not able to come out. So very sorry she couldn't be here tonight. That was what I forgot. All right, Arturo, are you ready?
Ready, ready or not.
Here we go.
You know, first of all, thank you all for coming tonight. I mean, Wednesday evening, you know, we should be having dinner at home, rather than being here. So it shows a lot of commitment from your part, and we thank you for it. I honestly was thinking last night about this forum, and the question that I got was the question that I was hoping I would get. It, but I, you know, I had to speak. I was actually looking forward to doing this one, to be said. But, okay, for more like Green Del Ridge, that's the question, okay? So I was thinking, okay, well, you know, at least we'll do Green X and M or something, right? But seriously, seriously, I think, as Lisa mentioned, I think you come here, we tell you some of the things that maybe you think that you want to hear, but I think the pudding is going to be when you come here and listen to you, and whoever gets selected should come monthly, quarterly, and listen to you, what are some of the concerns that you have, what are some of the things that you want to be addressed. So I think that should be a promise from all of us to you. You know, I think you are doing some of those things. I wanted to talk about this and any of the issues in terms of what is being done now and where do we want to go with it, where we want to be, what kind of models that we have around the country that we look at, that we can, you know, imitate or look at, and many times also kind of take the long-term view, you know, especially if it's going to take some budgets, some money, we're probably going to have to wait a while to do that. So, or at least do it in stages. So what are some of the things that we are doing? I think we already, I read something about community gardening, you know, we've got some of that out here, and pipeline all over this place, so some of those things have been done already. You know, what are some of the other things that we want to do that really would promote a Green Del Ridge? And I think one of those things would be public transportation. We should try to encourage people to use public transportation. You know what it is, that it's a bicycle path going down here, it was going down here this morning, and there were some people going on bicycles, so that is definitely Green Del Ridge here. You know, there are some other things, farmers markets, I haven't seen, you might have one here. Now I see one farther down towards the other side of town, but I haven't seen one here. Definitely promoting the bicycle path is one of those kinds of things that we can do. We are already doing, I think, so much more than cities and other communities are doing in terms of the recycling, in terms of, you know, not using plastic bags. I think those are things definitely that promote our green environment. I think, as was already mentioned, we are, you know, really diverse community that, many times, probably is not as engaged as we would like them to be. And I think one of the challenges is going to be, what can we do? I was in a forum the other week, and that was one of the questions of some of the people, what can we do? So some of these other community folks, whether it be Asian community, the Latino community, get more involved in some of these activities. And I promise you that that would be something that I have learned to do and that I can do. So I invite you to look at some of my brochures if you want to know more about me. I have some over there, if you want to find out what I know about. Thank you.
Thank you, Arturo. And select. All right, votes are in. And survey says. Okay. Shannon?
Yes.
Are you ready?
I'm ready, I think. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Game shows always make me a little nervous even when I watch them on TV, so I just need a minute. So my priority was conduct outreach and serve populations that cross class, ethnicity, and cultural lines and communities. And when I reviewed the questions that Matt sent out previously, what I liked about them was while these are set up as Del Ridge priorities, they apply so much to our city as a whole. So when I look at being the District One council member, Del Ridge is a prime, the Del Ridge corridor is a prime area to provide an example for this work, because as a whole, Del Ridge is more diverse, has lower income, and requires us more to go out into this community to direct, to do that outreach so that people know what opportunities might be available, that the city can help move forward. I will say on a very simple scale, I was in Korea a few months ago with my daughter, who's adopted from Korea, and for most of the time, I had an English-speaking and Korean-speaking person with me. But for a couple of days, I was on my own with my daughter. I don't speak Korean. I don't read Korean. And I will tell you, it was fascinating to me when I look back on it, the times I needed help, I rarely tried to ask for it. I would stand, I would look at a sign, I would look like I was lost, and someone would come to me and they would say, I speak English, can I help you? And I think as for outreach for this kind of work, it's some of the most challenging work that any of us can do as public officials and in nonprofits as well. I know when I served on the board of the food bank, we might have a sense of the types of foods that different cultural, different cultures are interested in, and we would do our best to provide those foods, but we didn't really know. It was very hard to reach into some pockets of those communities and have a very good understanding of what would, what they would consider a good and nutritious meal and how comfortable they would be coming to the food bank, for example, to pick up that meal. So these are just some examples that demonstrate to me that we can't as staff be everywhere all the time. So what we need is advocates in our community who are listening on our behalf and who will, for example, at dinner or a place of worship, say to me, if I were elected to be your council member, Shannon, we have an issue, for example, with our Somali community, and we would like you to come and speak to this group. And it might be intimidating for folks to come into my office or a pain to get downtown, and the important thing would be for me to go to them. I think it's all about listening and putting yourself where you need to be to get the work done and to have an understanding of what the issues are. I can make a lot of assumptions, but I look at it from a very different perspective. I grew up in Bellingham, English is my first language, I have a stable income. I am not as intimidated by some of these opportunities, for example, to even come to a community meeting. And I know that for others, that can be a real challenge. So I think Del Ridge is doing great work in this regard, and we're sitting in a good example of that. For example, I think the mural project was a great, a great example of reaching out to populations, crossing classes, ethnicity, cultural lines, and communities. It was to deal with gang-related graffiti, and it evolved into creating an arts education opportunity, economic development, demonstrating how people can get involved with jobs in the arts. It brought Southwest Youth and Family Services, our Seattle Police Department, the folks here in Del Ridge. This is the kind of outreach and projects that I would really be looking to try to advocate for throughout District One, frankly, but particularly in Del Ridge, because I think Del Ridge, given the demographics and the population and the great examples set by the neighborhood councils here, by this facility at Youngstown, is a really, really great example of how to do this outreach nature consortium, really tries to bring folks to the table that don't necessarily have the opportunity to go hiking on the weekends in the Cascades, you know? They look, they go and they look for those populations that need that education, that need that opportunity, and they provide that for them. And I think that that's going to be the most important thing as the district council member, is to look as much as possible for those opportunities in Del Ridge and frankly, throughout the city.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay. And select. Everyone in?
Do you happen to prefer rope?
Uh-uh.
Maybe you have, maybe you did it twice. Okay. You did. Oh, there we go.
And survey says.
Oh, 43% said that you said Del Ridge all the way.
All right.
I guess the case doesn't work for you.
All right, Phillip, are you ready?
I am ready.
Here we go.
Thank you. So I got the question of how I would strengthen the schools in this neighborhood. Love that question. Both my parents are educators. I actually taught high school, I've taught college, I taught the worker reeducation program, and this is a subject that's near and dear to my heart, because the truth is, schools are the backbones of our communities, and we do not put enough time and effort into fixing them. There's an anecdote I've always heard that kind of drives me nuts, that when Rick Van Winkle woke up from his 100 years of sleep, he saw all the changes in technology and society, and he was freaked out, and he finally went into a schoolhouse and said, oh, something looks familiar. And, you know, the fact is, there's too much of that. We have a neighborhood here in Del Ridge where you can go from preschool through college in the same neighborhood, and that is pretty rare, in this district and in this city. So I would do a lot of things. One, through South Seattle College, there's an incredible co-op preschool program. I know my son is in that right now. I would expand that program. I would put a couple of co-op preschools here in the Del Ridge area. You've got a large neighborhood, put a couple of them there and work with that. Science, technology, engineering, mathematics are near and dear to my heart. I was a physics major, I've done a lot with STEM education, and so some of the things I would do actually from, you know, elementary school through to South Seattle College are show up and talk, get other people to show up and talk, look into the neighborhood. District One has got some incredible people that represent the arts and science and humanities and politics. Work with the community, get those people in our schools. You know, the fact is, we're only going to survive and thrive as a culture if we start doing a better job at an early age with our schools, educating our children and getting them engaged. For example, tonight, what an amazing event this is. There's thousands of people here, and all of you who came is wonderful, but we need more people. And one of the ways we do that is we start getting to them earlier. So if we have our council member from our district, and this is absolutely what I would do as a District One council member, go to the schools, talk to the kids about being engaged. Just because they can't vote yet doesn't mean they can't do things. There are programs around this world where kids are planting millions of trees, kids are saving money, and they're making a massive difference. If we get them engaged at an early age by bringing captivating speakers and showing them what the system is like, we are going to get a community that is incredibly strong. One of the other things I would do is fundraise. Fact is, a lot of schools around Seattle do their own fundraising to get equipment and products and money for their programs, but there's a tremendous inequality that if you have an area that's not as high an income area, they don't raise as much money. Well, if you've got a District One council member who is helping you and drawing from all the parts of the community to raise money, you can get more things into the schools. You can get them computers. You know, we can go to the public library here on Del Ridge, and we can get them more portable Wi-Fi hotspots so that everyone has access to that. We can tap into programs to get computers to all the students and all the families, because that's one of the things, equal access to technology and information is the thing that creates these disparities when people leave school. So we should take Del Ridge, and we should look at this as an opportunity to say, even though the richest people in District One do not live here, and we don't get the most taxes from the entire district, we can still have schools that are producing amazing students who want to leave school and change the world. You know, work with the programs at South Seattle College and work with the industry here, the businesses we have, to create internship programs. You know, kids can start learning in high school what they want to do. Maybe they don't want to go to college, maybe they want to work in the port. We have got a city that has got industries that span everything and some of the most incredible technology companies on the planet Earth. We need to harness that. The city council member from District One has a platform to be able to walk into any one of these businesses, Amazon, Microsoft, Real Networks, any one of these places and say, look, help us, come into our district, help teach our students to become what you need, and help them use your incredible products and your technology to change this world, to change this community, and to better it. So the fact is, I literally will do everything in my power to support strengthening the schools in this district from top to bottom. We're going to have universal pre-K, we need to be on top of that. We've got Montessori schools in here, we have public schools here, anything we can do to just get people more engaged, get the parents more engaged, teach them what jobs their kids can have down the road, because a lot of times, especially with science and math, people don't know what learning algebra in seventh or eighth grade is going to give to you when you're 30. We can teach that. And I'll tell you, I would use my background in education to expand every program possible and make these schools feel like they're part of a community.
All right. Thank you, Phillip. And it is time to select.
Somebody didn't get an opportunity, there's some water down here, it's really hot in that row. Can you read seconds?
All right, all votes in. Survey says.
All right, second time in a row, Del Ridge all the way is in the lead. Follow closely why, I guess that'll work.
So of the three innings we have tonight, just a brief first inning stretch, one of the things that we do in this council is we start on every meeting by saying hello to everyone. I'm going to talk to the candidates real quick. If you want to just look around, see someone you don't recognize, and say hi. I appreciate that very much.